To reconvene in the meeting of the Pelham City Schools Board of Education, if you all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Sherry Klubowski.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I can remind everybody, please take your cell phone to either turn on or to vibrate. Appreciate it. First item, we're going to go through an organizational meeting. We do this at the beginning of each year. We just had our election. A little civics lesson. The Board of Education, you have five board members. You don't elect a president, like the Pelham City, elects a mayor. It's a rotating position that the Board elects in. So, in an organizational meeting, we're going to have a couple of quick elections to situate ourselves and then we'll carry on with the regular business of the district, okay? Let's start with the, we need to swear in some of the election.
Three really liked the board members.
Would you please do?
You want to come out here or do you want to stand where you're at?
He said stand where we're at.
Stand where you're at.
Come on over, Phoebe. Come on over.
So, ready? I state your name.
I state your school.
So, start, ready?
Do solemnly swear.
We didn't say our names.
Did you? Did you say your names? Okay. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California.
Do solemnly swear.
Defend the state.
Yeah, a little shorter.
I tried to, I couldn't.
I feel like I need to like put it up here.
I don't want to be this twice.
Do you have that? Yeah, ready?
Yeah, we're supposed to do that.
Okay, awesome. I guess, you want to start again?
Go right, go for the right. Okay, now do it to us.
Okay, we're starting. I state your name.
I state my last name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, and that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Welcome.
I like the pledge of allegiance when young students are here. They go slow, we go fast.
All right. It's all official.
All right.
Four years. Thank you for running. All right, let's move on to the second item, which is going to be nomination election of board officers. And actually, I had indicated I would work this a certain way and I changed my mind. We're going to first have the election of the board president. So, I will take a nomination for that parcel.
I nominate Mike Beck.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on Mike's fitness for this role?
Well.
Not up yet.
Well, at least it is.
All those in favor? Aye. And I oppose. Mr. Baddeley, it is an honor to turn this over to you. And for the meantime, I'm going to move here, but then I'm going to do the switch afterwards, yeah?
Okay.
All right, so it's all you.
Dodge the ball.
Well, thank you and thank you for the faith and the honor. And I've had the privilege of serving under several good, solid, competent board presidents. Christina Cow, Troy Sanderson, Mary Lou. So, large shoes, so hopefully I can fill them, but I definitely give it my best effort. So, having said that, we've got to go to the next item of business, which is to nominate a clerk. So, if I've learned nothing else in my 30 years of practicing law, or 30 plus now, it's the DOS system. Deputized, organized, and supervised. So, delegation's a big component of that, so you need a clerk that you can dump almost everything off on. So, I would nominate Sherry Klubowski as my clerk.
Yeah, now you're president.
I can't nominate?
Now you have to delegate, God, I don't nominate?
All right. Do I have a nominee?
I can nominate.
Not that I want to stay my president.
I'm waiting for Phoebe to get her ramshackle.
I would second that nomination.
Any discussion? Reservations? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Ayes, carry. Let's move again. Can you hit the right side of the table? I'm working my way over there somewhere, all right? If I keep going, I'll end up back there. That's the plan.
You're going to go this way?
No, 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 you go to the left. I come over to the left.
If anybody knows that service, you know, people go ahead and call it now.
And you better take your chocolate or it's... Thank you. Oh, yeah, I want, I want that one. I'm already...
That's passed, that's passed.
Is this you?
I was really working my way over there.
Yeah.
That's not him.
Is this you?
That was the plan.
Is this you?
No, I'm good. Troy, see, yeah.
I feel like he wants this. Oh, you brought this one. No, you need this one. Oh, you're not staying about time. All right. There.
Now, we need to nominate a secretary. Traditionally, it's been our superintendent. So, I would like to ask if anybody would like to nominate a secretary. I would like to nominate Steve Woburn.
I'd like to second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, carry? Steve, vote in the board. So, an action item, we need four selection of representatives and alternative representatives to fill vacancies on the Snowa County Committee on School District Organization.
Okay, this, every year I have to explain this one?
Yes.
There's a committee on which I sit at the county level and we review and discuss school district boundaries and other issues related. And every year, there become vacancies for a variety of reasons. People leave, what have you. What we're voting on, on this is not the seat that I hold, but on the seat that elects the people who, to that committee. And it's just a ballot. So, it's not a hard job. You just have to read your email and when you get a ballot, you have to complete it. So, that's what that role is, is to vote on members for that committee. Does that make sense?
Right. And so, you have to have a representative and an alternate.
Right.
The last representative was Sherry and the alternate was Phoebe the last time.
So, once again, I would nominate.
No, you can't. So, since I'm on that committee, I don't want to be the representative to vote on.
Yeah, you're not for the LPLAC committee.
So, I would nominate Phoebe to be the representative and Troy to be the alternate.
Do we have a second? Should we jump in real quick?
I second that.
Yeah, I was going to say, Sherry, here's your opportunity.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Ayes, carry? Okay, board meeting dates?
So, we have, um, Melissa board meetings, starting with tonight's meeting through December as an attachment. Primarily the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. With the exception of one meeting in March, and that has to be on the 10th. Sometimes you go into the third, but that has to be on the 10th because it's got to be prior to the 15th. For the action on the first interim, or second interim report. And one meeting in July, which is the second Tuesday. One meeting in August, which would be the third Tuesday. One meeting in November, which would be the third Tuesday. And one meeting in December, which would be the second Tuesday.
The November 1st, the third Tuesday, how does that relate to Thanksgiving?
The 17th, this week before.
Oh, okay.
In regards to December, there's a concern about the length of time between meetings this year from the last meeting, five weeks between meetings. We might want to look at moving that meeting to the 15th, which would make four weeks and four weeks between meetings, as opposed to having five weeks between the November meeting and December meeting and have an agenda like we had today. That might help a little bit.
Getting the agenda a little earlier.
But we reserve the right with, do you know this right, to change meetings?
Add meetings and change meetings, correct. This is just the tentative, or this is, the board schedule, if the board's schedule, uh, board meeting schedule can be changed.
Okay. Anybody have any comments?
I already have one conflict. I know I will not be at the July meeting. As long as there's a majority, I think I'll be here.
You're not going to be at a July meeting regardless of when in July it is, or?
I will be that, July 14th, though I can't be at July 14th.
Going to every meeting, yeah?
Yeah. Just taking, I'm getting ready.
Anybody else have any, you know, got to be, it's kind of a scandal sports conflict, but we'll work our way around. Okay. Real quick question, Steve. Tuesdays, what's the rationale for Tuesday versus Wednesday?
Well, when you're looking at the meeting dates, around Tuesday seems to be a good meeting date as far as everybody else. I will admit that in Pelham City Schools, the meetings have been Tuesday longer than the 23 years I've been in the district.
Forty years. Not that we're counting. No, it also has to do with the activities at the schools. I know that Tuesdays are hard for certain sporting events, but a lot of the events at school sites that are more academic oriented are Wednesdays and Thursdays. And so, Tuesdays are usually a little bit better related to that.
Yeah, Troy and I have always wrestled back and forth with that. Girls on Tuesday, boys on Wednesday, so it's pretty funny. This year, girls on Tuesdays, boys on Wednesdays. Any event, um, anybody have any other comments about the calendar? Okay. All in favor of?
We have a motion.
Or want to make a motion?
As proposed.
As proposed.
I stumble, that's proposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? That's clear, so that's my turn.
Does August 18th matter?
The calendar will come to the board possibly at the next meeting. There's a committee that will be meeting to prepare the 15, 16 calendar.
Please, your, um, your tweets.
Yeah, I got it. So, our public hearing. Three seed items. We have the Mary Collins Charter School at Cherry Valley Charter School Renewal.
You're open to public hearing?
Just open the public hearing on that. Anybody want to speak to us on that? Nobody? Going once, going twice? Okay. Nothing else to do, Steve?
Nope. Nope. There's an action item relative to the charter later in the agenda.
Okay. Next item, we'll move to the adoption and approval of the agenda. So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I can't tell on this new system what's, on the consent and what's to vote.
Okay, so in the new... In looking at the new agenda, um, the, if you go down to, under L, consent agenda.
So, you just have to read everything that's listed?
Everything that's under L. So, the next page, under the hard copy, the next page and a half is all consent. Then you get into action items.
Hold on, I want to see on here, because I'm not going to be printing. I'm going to be...
So, for those of you out there and those watching at home, there's a new online agenda format.
This is the first meeting.
It's our first meeting with the new format, so sorry about that.
That we, that's CSBA, it's not Pelham.
It's not us.
It's not us. We have to learn what the other organization has changed.
Yeah, it looks, it looks completely different and it's, um, it's itemized and organized and outlined completely different. So, we've been using the other one extensively and now it's just changed.
Okay, I get it.
So, that's how you tail it. So, all the way through L, 1.7.
Yeah, I was looking for the little C and the V like we used to have.
Those are, those are common.
So, do you want to ask a question about something?
If you want to ask a question to something under consent, then you're going to ask the item to be removed from consent.
Yeah, so then I can pull it.
I didn't have, we're still in discussion, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had nothing to say.
Yeah, okay, so under L, I'm good.
Okay. Phoebe, Phoebe, okay?
Yes.
Can we move to the agenda? So, no...
Because we should know, we don't, yeah, we did what we, oh, certainly said we did.
So, now, because we're not supposed to talk about it until we do.
We will second it, we're discussing.
There's no more discussion, we go on, but...
All in favor of proving the agenda is stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Next item. Approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes.
So, move. Second. Oh, no, I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
You can't.
Troy, move.
Troy, move. So, this is the minutes of the December 9th board meeting, way back before Christmas, which seems now like a year ago.
Oh, I did. Oh, I just had a, kind of a typo. I'm sorry. Under this new system, I have to go to, and maybe Laura can help me with this after meeting. She's done the room. I have to, there's like four steps to get the attachments for me. Should it be past tense on the first sentence, C1, adjournment to close session? The board did meet, not the board will meet?
Yeah.
That's all for me.
Okay.
So, do you want to revise the motion in the second?
To reflect the correction?
I'll revise my motion to the front chairs.
I'll second that one. People that have never been here before will never come again.
So, as so revised, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But I'm not moving.
Okay. Four, and one, and an extra.
Here we go.
Now, we've come to probably the most orderly part, which is the students, right? So, special recognition reports and presentations. We have student reports to the board. So, we are going to, um, here tonight, I believe, we have student representatives from Carpe Diem here, okay? And from Snowa Mountain. And from Casa Grande. And from Pelham High School. Okay? So, I'm just going to go in the order of red. Let's start with the student representatives of Carpe Diem. And then students, if you do me a favor, um, give us your name and your class. You know, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. We can come right up to the podium and take your time. Would you like to know who's up?
Well, hi, I'm Zach Wood. And I'm a senior at Carpe Diem High School. This is my second full year at Carpe and I plan on graduating June of this year. I'm planning on taking classes at the JC, neither Wildlife or Management, Law or Wildlife Management. I came to Carpe because my counselor suggested it. And I was interested in the smaller learning environment. In the end, Carpe Diem helped me succeed, mostly because of my individualized instruction the program provides for the students. We have been on two hikes in the campout for our outdoor education program. Our first hike was at Tennessee Valley in Marin, where we ate lunch on the beach. Our second hike was at Annadale State Park in Santa Rosa. We hiked along to Lake Nelson Joe and we had lunch there before our return. We had a dual-school campout at Samuel P. Taylor Hart in West Marin in October. About 45 students attended and spent the night at the raccoons in Redwood. We have two more hikes scheduled for the semester, as well as an end-of-the-year campout in May. Hikes and campouts, one of the best parts of our school. Both schools had their own Thanksgiving feast. Mr. Stevenson cooked the turkey and the teachers organized it, so we all brought food and enjoyed a great family visit. At Christmas, we had a school-wide secret Santa gift exchange, and the teachers included. And another pop-up that they put together by all the students. Last November, Carpe Diem hosted a three-school event with Snowa Mountain Crossroads called Bike of Reality. The program was sponsored by Redwood Credit Union and included 20 community volunteers. It was designed to give us a taste of how expensive things can be in the real world and how important it is to manage the money you have. During the program, each student was given a persona with the current job, income, spouse, child, and bills to pay. Volunteers were trying to sell us more than we can afford. I think it's to teach us a lesson. Thought it was important, and from the experience, I learned about the importance of getting a good job and managing my money. Carpe Diem has ordered a storage shed to be built by PHS students and it should be ready mid-spring. It will give us much-needed storage for our outdoor equipment and other school items that don't have a home yet. We had one December graduate. She was planning on attending Empire College. Thank you, thank for your time. Looking forward to see you at graduation.
Thank you. That was well done. Now, do we have our representative from Snowa Mountain?
Hi, I'm Haxi Womack. I'm a senior at Snowa Mountain High School. I've been going to Snowa Mountain for two and a half years. I will be graduating in June of this year. In two weeks, I'll be attending a class to receive a license to apply makeup. And then after graduation, I decided to be in the Lydell Phoebe College in Santa Rosa. I came to Snowa Mountain because I was very credit deficient and I wanted to graduate on time. I didn't want to be a super senior and if I did come here, I probably would have dropped out of high school. At Snowa Mountain, it was easier to succeed because you get to know your teachers better and they get to know you better as a student and a person. I also like the small school community they have to offer. This year, we have a few new staff members. We have hired Joanna as our career outreach specialist. She has recently posted volunteer displays at each site with information regarding job opportunities, volunteer opportunities, and scholarship information. She has set up career presentations by Empire College at both schools, as well as Santa Rosa JC counselor presentations and tours of the campus in the spring. Snowa Mountain will be traveling to the Culinary Institute of America in Santa Helena for another career field trip. Tomorrow, Snowa Mountain students are going to hear a presentation about the new health clinic at Casa Grande. After the presentation, we will be given a short tour of the building. We have two new counselors this year, Nikki and Belle. They each work at both schools and are more accessible because they're at our school more frequently. We have a counselor on site two foldings a week this year. Both Snowa Mountain and Carpe Diem are set up with one-to-one devices. Both sites are using full school sets of Chromebooks and iPads on a daily basis. Chromebooks are also available for students to take home for research or schoolwork if they don't have access to a personal device of their own. Our teachers are using Google Classroom with other computer-based programs so we can access the work anywhere we can get online. Snowa Mountain had three December graduates this year. One graduate will be attending Santa Rosa A.C.D. College and another will be attending Santa Rosa Junior College, both starting this semester. Our enrollment just increased by seven students last week, which leaves us almost full. Thank you for your time and for supporting alternative education.
Thank you, that was nicely done. Now, the big house is this Casa Grande.
Good evening, I'm Brian. I'm the president at Casa Grande.
And I'm Alton Doza, Vice President, my cousin, I mean. Uh, next week, the counselor will be going to Canor to start the process of helping incoming freshmen sign up for the courses they'll be taking next school year. They'll be using a process of online course, referenced in Canor, that admin hopes to implement this system to address the cost of Casa by next year. The following week, counselors will be going to the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes to start their assignments as well.
This spring, Mr. Ruston's intermediate and advanced drama classes are working on 10-minute, one-act plays, many of which will be used as a spray mainstage production. One of these acts is written by Senior Max O'Leary.
Ms. McNeese will be presenting college and career-ready Spanish on Tuesday, March 3rd at Educating for Careers Conference in Sacramento, sponsored by the California Career Pathways, Castoria, and Partnership Academics. The presentation is focused on the work she has done in Spanish for the Workplace Program, which addresses many of the 15 California industries at Casa. The various courses I have written through the University of California Curriculum and Integration Institute of the UCOB. These courses will focus on industries of health, business, and hospitality. Anne Fender recommended she should apply to the present for the March Conference. Spanish for the Workplace has been offered at Casa at levels 2, 3, and 4. Spanish for the past 10 years and fulfill the UC CSE requirements.
In Ms. Holly's biology classes this grading period, the unit is dedicated to evolution and natural selection. Students will be looking at genetics and learning how to apply the basic concepts they learned last semester to see how favorable traits are passed on and over time, evolution is thus driven. They will also be exploring the empirical evidence that supports evolution, one of which is the embryological development sequences. Thus, the honors biology classes will be doing their yearly project of studying chickens and their development. It will be hatching the chicks in the classroom at home as well.
Leadership class, leadership class, we use one of it as an opportunity to give back volunteering at Casa by decorating their rooms for the holidays. Our one-off one was a great, a night at Gatsby themed and is one on, is on Saturday, January 31st, accompanied with a rally on the Soviet. We are working on getting a motivational speaker, Scott Bakavich, to come to Casa this semester. After January, speaking at the cattle leadership conference, we attended a panel on holidays in November.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last but not least, our Pelham High School representative.
Hi, I'm Phoebe King. I'm the ASB Vice President at Pelham High. ASB President Matt Thomas had to go to the JC class, so. So, in regards to ASB, we are currently working on many things in leadership. Our second club rush of the year is this Friday during lunch and we'll be having 12 clubs host tables to renew members for last, from last semester and/or to continue a new club, uh, join a new club this semester. Also, we will be having a table for our Make-A-Wish Rally, which I will talk about more in a bit, for people to come and write down a wish that they have or they have for someone else that might be granted at the rally on February 10th. Also, our eighth-grade parent night is next week on the 22nd, where we will be having teachers from all departments, as well as student organizations promoting our fabulous programs. Our Under the Sea themed winter formal is coming up on January 24th. The junior class is putting on this dance and they have made many efforts, such as organizing the nomination for our senior King Triton and freshman sophomore and junior Prince Eric's in hopes to raise attendance to over 400 students. Our second blood drive of the year is coming up on January 29th. Coming up in February is our kindness week, the 10th through the 13th. This week will include such things as our Make-A-Wish Rally, where we will be announcing those selected to have their wishes granted and action-oriented spirit days such as High Five Day, Hug Day, Smile the Stranger Day, and so on. Towards the end of the week, we will have our annual singing Valentine's and Rose Grams. In regards to FFA and wildlife, last year, one of our best Trojan connections was put on by FFA and in the spirit of our upcoming FFA week, the week of the 23rd, FFA will be putting on another one on the 24th. Our wildlife museum is continuing to work on the tide pool restoration project they started last semester. In regards to athletics, the varsity cheer team won first place in the Regional Intermediate Group St. Division, earning a bid to Nationals with the highest score a varsity cheer team has ever received at Pelham High. They have also won first place in the Regional Varsity Show Career Cheer Novice Division. They earned a second bid to Nationals as they've already earned their first bid for the division at their first competition of the year last year, where they placed second in their division. The boys and girls basketball teams, as well as the coed wrestling team, have all started and are continuing to lead play. In regards to PEF, seniors are being assigned in their government and economics classes to apply to at least one Pelham High or PEF scholarship this semester. They are assigned, assigning this project in hopes to boost students' interest in applying for free money. In regards to our pathway program, seniors are also encouraged to apply for a pathway... seniors are also encouraged to apply for a pathway certificate. These certificates are granted to those who have completed a sequence of classes in different courses of study. These sequences include an introductory course, a concentration, and a capstone. One example is the legal and government pathway. In order to attain certification along with academic core, a student could have taken elective courses like Intro to Business or Spanish I as an introduction, A.P. Statistics or Psychology and Sociology as a concentration, and Legal Studies or Entrepreneurship as a capstone. In regards to testing, the K.C. or the California High School Exit Exam will be administered February 3rd and 4th. Juniors are also currently taking the SAT and ACT tests to prepare for their college applications in the fall. In regards to our music department, we have events coming up at the Mystic Theater on the 17th, featuring Adam Theis with the PHS Jazz Ensemble, and on January 27th, featuring David Lundwing and the PHS Jazz Combo at Lagunitas. And our staff has nominated Mr. Denny Flyler, our fabulous math teacher and longtime wrestling coach, as the California League of High Schools Teachers of the Year. PHS will be well represented at the award ceremony on January 22nd at the Village in Healdsburg. Thank you.
Now, just so I can, you know, win over a few of the young people, I'm gonna let you guys go. You get to go, and we're gonna go ahead and take a little recess, and then we'll come back with public comments. So, you guys go enjoy your evening, do some productive, and thank you, and have a great second half of the year. All right, let's get back to it. Without further ado, let's go to public comment. Do I have any public comment tonight? This could be a first. No public comment? Go on once, go on twice? You want it?
What did that cost you?
Okay, so no public comment. We'll go right into the report and activities of the correspondence of school board members. Anybody have anything to report?
I did go attend the back-to-school teacher and service day on morning sessions. It was great, a lot of teachers engaged with their new computers and P.L.N. discussions. Like, it went very well, lots of hard work, I know, by any district administration. So, good job to the district and the teachers, and liked the good lunch. So, thank you to everyone here, and all the teachers that attended.
Mary's left. Mary, just for those who had a death in their family, so she had to leave, she's got some family issues. So, did you want to talk about?
Because I would just like to publicly thank Phoebe for the coffee.
Never got through, Mary.
And blowing all the circuits. Circuits and that's a guy that. But Phoebe really stepped up and volunteered and helped us out with morning coffee and that kind of stuff. It was great, thanks, Phoebe.
And she probably won't submit a reimbursement request, great, so don't worry. She was very generous. Sherry, have you had?
Yes, one of the children's art show at the Petaluma Museum. Cherry Valley Site Visit, Grant Music Concert. And then Mike and I went to a two-day legal seminar for education law, which was really great. And it was interesting, not only with other school board members who were also attorneys, but there were school board members who were not attorneys. And a couple of them said, "I prefer to go to this one and get the legal update than go to the C.S.P.A. one." So, it was good, it made some contacts and got a lot of information on it.
And lots of pertinent discussions, something around technology.
Yeah, you know what, I should have brought the agenda, I could have told other classes we went to, but do you have it? Oh.
I did take notes, Sherry doesn't take notes. But, in the end, they talked about a lot of good subject matters, and they were relevant.
Yeah, they were great, they had.
Very topical trends.
Workplace bullying, how to lead without breaking the rules, which was good for advising school board members, which is why we have to advise ourselves. Chromebooks, iPads, and bandwidth, technology acquisition trends, addressing student electronic media issues, legal update for California community colleges. Maybe we didn't go that when we chose to announce on that one. That was the other one, we don't have date one.
Well, yeah, I was pretty exhausted.
There was another one too. But anyway, there's lots of great stuff, some H.R. stuff, some labor stuff. It was good.
I did have, I will say, and we'll talk more about it when we get to the requestable waiver for attendance relating to the storm. But that day, Thursday, I did take the opportunity to go to the secondary schools. So I went to the junior high school, Brooklyn High School, actually, in Cana Works. And was really impressed with the amount of work that everybody did, especially the classified staff who were out there in the rain getting sold. I applied to others and drags, and it was nice to see. So, I'm sure that we'll talk more about that.
Phoebe and I met with some teachers, administrators at Petaluma High School, just did a walk-through on the gym that is going to be refurbished over there. So, that was pretty informative, I felt. And then, for those of you who don't know, I announced the basketball games for the PHS varsity girls. And they had their alumni, which was nice, a lot of our old students came back, and I'm proud to report, nobody got hurt, that's all I would care about that. Because every once, it seems like every once in a while, we get someone goes down, and I know the varsity coaches.
Yeah, no, you got a broken finger on them.
Wow, that's just a wound, that's a nick, that's a nick. No, we've seen knees and heads, anyhow. It was pretty good, and it was nice, and it's a nice little annual ritual that the high school does. So anyhow, if you have a good chance, come watch it, it's very entertaining. So we did that, and then they announced their games. And anyhow, it's been nice watching all that goes on in a game with the cheerleaders and the fans, and it's a lot of good stuff. And if you haven't been, at least to Petaluma High, they've got this new kind of information scoreboard system. It rolls out, it does advertising, promotion, so, kind of neat, and has the kids' pictures up there. So, anyhow, it's a fun day. So, without further ado, let's go to the consent agenda. Anybody have any comments, discussion?
The consent agenda.
All in favor?
Just to clarify.
Do you want to ask a clarifier?
Just about the sub-wage increase.
Yeah.
Went from what to what?
We went up a few dollars on the sub-wage increase to be competitive with surrounding districts. And you have read the paper about the difficulty of keeping getting and retaining substitute teachers.
Did that make us more competitive now?
Put us in the middle of the range.
And that just came about because we needed to be competitive?
Yeah, and we have historically done that in January, as far as, we changed it last couple times.
Any further questions? No further questions? All in favor? You oppose? No? So we'll go on to, let's see. Educational Services, we're now to, for those of you following this, in Section M, Action Items. So, M1, Administrative Human Resources, amended student calendars for 2014-15 due to emergency weather closures. Discussion?
I'd just like to share that we changed the calendars because, remember, we went to 180 days, but there's no state requirement to be at 180 days yet. So we're doing two things at this evening's meeting. One is decreasing the calendar to 178, because we had two may-not-days. But we're also based on the recommendation of our auditors, having an item later in the agenda for a waiver as well. So we have covered all of our bases relative to the two days. And so this is changing our calendar for the current year from 108 to 178.
So the days don't have to be made up?
Correct, so the days don't have to be made up.
And teachers, Casa Grande, everyone was paid for those two days?
Everyone was paid for the two days.
And we as a district were paid for eighty-eight?
Well.
It comes later with the waivers. Anybody have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes out. So now we'll go to M2, which is Business Services, Purchase Orders. M2-1, anybody have any recusals? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Phoebe, you put it in the buzzer?
Yeah, I have a question. For maybe it's for Ray. There was a big expenditure for Apple Inc. purchase orders? So I guess, the expenditures, as well as the purchase orders, I know we're saying purchase orders right now, there's all these different expenditures for Apple Inc., some of them are for Costa, some of them Petaluma High, some of them, I assume the big one under the expenditures was for the teacher MacBooks?
Yes.
That's supposed to be five hundred thousand? So then either it's bond money, or is this working budget money?
It's bond money.
Okay. And then what about the other, there was about fifty thousand in purchase order for, I think it was to Apple for Costa, it said, Costa purchase?
Casa was using.
Casa is putting in a new lab, an Apple lab, that's going to be used for 3D animation and digital media. Their 3M pathway. The reason they're switching over to Apple is because it's the industry standard for animation, both animation and 3D, any kind of 3D work. So, they're switching out a lab that is currently a PC lab to an Apple lab.
And they're doing that with site funds?
They had a donation.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Next item would be similar, list of expenditures, M2-2, is that an action item?
I did have to include yourself.
All in favor?
Aye.
401.
301.
I'm sorry, 301. M2-3, waiver request authorization.
Okay, this is, Mike, if you want, you could put M2-3, 24, 25, 26, 27, together. They're all the waiver requests.
I don't need a special action to consolidate them? By the powers best at me, by the state of California?
The chair can do that.
Okay, I'll consolidate them. So M2-3 through M2-7?
Yes.
That's what we're discussing right now, so, those are all the waivers pursuant to the closures. Discussion?
So, we have the ability to seek a waiver from the state for flood and road closures, which occurred due to the storms on Thursday and Friday in December. I know there was an article in the paper relative to Friday. In reality, Friday morning, there were more road closures at the time of our arrival time than there were on Thursday. For instance, I'll just share Ray's story on that Friday morning, coming to work. Rona Park, it took her an hour and a half, and forty-five minutes was trying to make the turn onto Washington because we couldn't take Petaluma Boulevard north to get off. And that's without having a few hundred of our employees coming from the north to Petaluma. So.
So you're saying that'll support, that'll support the waiver?
Yeah, I mean, I think, again, waiver's not absolutely required at this time. It was just a recommendation from the auditorie that we seek the waiver, and we're abiding by this recommendation, so we have all bases covered. But contrary to what was reported, Friday was going to be as difficult for people to get to. There are a lot of west-side flooding as well, as far as road closures. And our buses would not have been able to run as well as they did on Thursday, when on Friday.
And I just want to say, I think if everyone knew about our staff that were up almost all night long checking campuses and trying to do this in the most efficient, safe, you know, I know we got a lot of criticism for closing when we did on Thursday, but I just really want to commend people for working their tails off to try to keep everything safe and keep kids in school. And I was personally here Thursday afternoon for several hours, laboring with other superintendents, laboring with staff from our district on whether or not we should close on Friday. So this was not a decision made lightly, and everybody was trying very, very hard, and everybody was worried about student safety and employee safety. And I just, I just want you to hear me say that, thank you for working so hard, and it was not an easy decision.
It's a tough call, I mean, weather-related, anything is a tough call. And then it's, once you make that call, we all know weather works, so it can still be change of circumstances, you know, good and bad. You know, all of a sudden, the sun comes out, why'd you call it? Only because there was just storming a minute ago, and vice versa. Sun's out, why you calling it, then here comes a deluge. So, I hope we're able to revisit our policy a little bit, and, you know, I think the complaints I agree with, mostly just advance notice, just make a decision. We stand by, good and bad, and sometimes we're gonna look foolish because the sun's gonna be out, it's like we called it. Other times, we'll look like heroes because, you know, we called it and, you know, it was a deluge. So, you're probably always gonna have a few people that are not gonna like the decision, but ultimately, like, chances we're gonna look after the safety of the group.
And one of the concerns was the late announcement, and, I'm all in.
Laurie, please interrupt that briefly. Laurie, that Laurie, is it in third person, Laurie?
Yes.
Before you do that, Laurie, if I could, just, one other thing, that's what I'm kind of thinking back on, that's been said here. We talked, Steve and I talked Wednesday night, and the intent was always, it's the last week before finals, and we are in the business of putting children in front of a teacher and in a classroom. And to the extent that it's safe to do so, that was the point. And I know, Steve, when you came down in the morning, and I woke up in the morning, it appeared as though we might be able to make that move.
They were making the call at 5:30 was.
Yeah, and to the extent that, yes, everybody would like as much advance notice, I think that the, I can say from my standpoint, the goal is to put children in the classroom. If it's safe and it makes sense, the people can get there. There's always going to be a school district full of seventy-five hundred children. There's going to be some people that live somewhere that is not going to allow them to get there. Unfortunately, there's some balance there where, I'm sorry if ten children can't make it because they live in two rock and a tree phone, but there's seven thousand four hundred ninety children that still can't make it to school because they have a little around the corner. Probably more relevant at the high school district where people are coming from, you know, middle school and high school, where people are coming from farthest distances. So a lot of the complaints, and we feel that a lot, I got a lot of phone calls, and I gotta tell you, they went both ways. I got a lot, it was clearly a divided community that said, "How dare you close so late?" And, "Why aren't my children in class, this is nothing." "I come from Wisconsin," and we're laughing at you. So it was a very difficult decision, and it had a lot of components, a lot had to do with our employees, a lot had to do with the students, but.
And that's changing conditions too. What looked right at 5:30 went to crud in about twenty minutes.
But I would as well say, I think our delivery can be better, and we can speak to the technology that will allow us to do that. Yeah, we're changing systems. But our goal and our desire was true and okay.
So the way that we contact parents right now is through what we call robo-call. We have a complete little insight that allows us to call all of our schools to give information via telephone. We are in the process of switching to another company called ParentLink. And ParentLink will give us that access, not just via telephone, but it will also give us that access to communicate via text. It will give us access to communicate via email so that we can push out information quicker, like in this day and age. And we can tweet out that information so that people are getting it in real time. So in case something does happen, we can give updates to. So in case something does happen, we can give updates to the information that's happening in a quicker response time. Also, with this new ParentLink is an app. So we will have a district-wide app. It's about two weeks out from being completed. I was hoping to have it completed today, but the meeting that I had was canceled. Our consultant was not feeling well. And that app will also push out our calendar to everyone. It integrates with your smartphone. So when you pull the app up and you click on any event that's happening in the district, automatically it blends in your calendar. When you pull that app up and you want to communicate with anyone in this district, whether it be a secretary, a principal, a teacher, their email address and whatever information that we publish there about them, all professional and nothing personal, can be integrated into your phone too. So we are moving to a place where we do understand that communication is integral to everything that we do. And we are moving to a company that is going to support us in these different endeavors that now families are accustomed to, you know, having real-time information all the time. We were hoping that before our first emergency, the transition would have happened. Unfortunately, ParentLink was sold to another company called Blackboard. And when, in the corporate world, when that happens, they seem to purge most of their employees. So that happened and we were assigned a new consultant at that point in time. It kind of had to start almost from scratch. So that did put us in a setback, but we're looking to make that transition here in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Lori. I want to echo something too that, and Steve, I have a question for you. But whenever we have those kind of weather-related emergencies and whatever, you understand, ultimately, employees, parents of children, they have to make their own call. For Troy's reasons, a tree's across the road you happen to be... Because we have kids out of the district, so I don't know, Russian River flooded and you're up in that area. You know, don't, you know, you don't have to make the Herculean effort. And the school can't gauge, a school has to make a decision to be open or closed. But there's always going to be the individual stories that each parent has to kind of look at his or her child situation and determine whether it's safe as to employees. But Steve, I was going to ask you, for parents out there to know, if we had a situation like that, say Sherry couldn't make it, you know, lines, power lines are there and she couldn't make it, it wasn't safe to leave her neighborhood or whatever. Do we have special waivers that kids can get, almost like an excused absence doctor's slip type thing where you get excused for missing a test that day or missing a homework assignment because you physically could not make the school?
Correct. Students would have been basically provided with an excused absence. The 13A, the report that you're taking tonight is because we closed school. If we hadn't closed school, you would be approving a 13A tonight because our attendance would have been less than ten percent of the normal. And we would have basically got paid for their normal attendance for those two days. So if they had been open and we would be way below ten percent of the normal kids. So there's multiple opportunities for waivers. The waiver today is because of closure of school, but there's also a waiver because you have substantial decline in enrollment due to, could be an epidemic, flu epidemic, it can be flooding.
Okay, I just wanted to...
That was a question that someone posed a little...
Yeah, there was the comment that we were keeping school open because...
We had someone say, "We're keeping it open to make money and closed it to get money." And it, but there was never anything financial about this. It was about safety. And what are our obligations to our students and our staff? And how do we make that match? And how did we get here? It wasn't about money.
It was an education incident.
Okay, any other discussion? I invited a whole number of people to come and comment. They're all going to come tonight, is there anybody? Now, any of these items, anybody? I mean, I probably invited twenty people who I talked to personally.
I had a few that said they were coming on that item as well.
Once they found out you weren't going to be present, they were going to...
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Anyhow, there being no further discussion and no comment from the public out there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, okay, so far, no other comments? The next one's M2-8, agreement ratification with Sharjo Muke, DBA ServiceMaster Restoration Services. Second. Steve?
So this is actually the previous storm, not the storm on this day. But remember, we had the heavy rains and we had drain plug. And we had the band room at Casa Grande flood, causing some damage. We had environmental study and the water had a level of contamination which caused us to do further work in the band room.
So you see the sheetrock?
So that's what you're going to see for the next item. Yeah, we took the sheetrock up a foot, cut it, we took the carpet out, tossed it. So you're seeing all those costs in the next three items. And then from that particular event, that was a day where the Casa Grande campus was flooded. And our maintenance crew was out there in hip waiters and hip-deep in water clearing out drains. We actually brought in outside people to help us clear the drains as well. But our crew is very good about going out and clearing the rains for the start of the rainy season. The drain that flooded behind the band room is a drain that had never flooded before. So it wasn't one of the ones that we know. You have to go out and clean that drain before the weather goes bad. And that's what caused the situation.
And this is all insurance money, right? Not a...
There's a question. Flooding itself is not an insured event. We're claiming and we'll stay under the self-insured retention. So it will be part of RSE's cost. Basically, all the school districts contributing to the pool that it wasn't, it wasn't just runoff water. It was because of plugged drain that caused this incident. And so we're having that discussion with RSE at this time.
Okay.
So is it been fixed now?
Yeah, there was no flooding at the, when, in the second storm.
And the band rooms been fixed and...
And they're hopefully, did they move back in on Friday?
Uh, I think that was the expectation. I was actually not in the office on Thursday.
You're right.
But I believe Julie said today that that work had been completed.
They moved back in today. So all the work has been completed. We had several people, and like I said, the next three items are each are three different groups that provide the services associated with that. And you can see it's a substantial amount of money.
Have we worked with Sharjo before?
ServiceMaster, yeah. We've worked with the ServiceMaster group to deal with contamination, contaminated situations in the past. Flooding near was a situation where we used ServiceMaster years ago, but we use them periodically. We use them at Petaluma High School.
We use them at Petaluma High School and somebody got off a go-for-all and it was called a disaster.
So we have...
Yeah, we have used them in the past. And I think we also used them at Casa at the, sorry, uh... When we had some flooding in the office, I think we used them.
Well, so Steve, let me get this straight. So we're approving these payments via insurance funds or we're approving that out of our general fund, hoping to recover it from insurance funds?
In reality, it says via insurance fund, but we're paying it out of our funds initially and we'll be fighting for the insurance reimbursement for the rest.
That's a question.
It's not an absolute.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
402. Next item, M2-9, agreement ratification with Central Valley Environmental for Abastment Abatement Services as a result of water damage at Casa Grande High School using building in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars via insurance funds.
Second.
Same discussion?
Yeah, Mike Foles here, he's our AHRa person in regards to asbestos. And this is a company that we've used in the past, Central Valley, by our note.
So you took out the sheetrock, sheetrock has asbestos and tapine and mud.
Yeah.
By the way, the danger of that is like...
Yeah. And you still have to go through a ceiling...
I know, the bunny suits and the...
Yep.
Yeah, I know.
And then you have to have the air monitor and the terms cleared before you can have the...
It's apparently appreciated as a taxpayer Australia.
Yep.
All right, Troy, you're unchained now. Any other, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's 40. M2-10, agreement ratification with Cars Construction Services for Water Damage Repair Work at Casa Grande High School Using Building in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars via insurance funds.
And this actually should be an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Deal charges, these charges, time of material not to exceed forty-five thousand.
So somebody want to make a modification in that?
Uh, so I'm going to say the new modification is not to exceed forty-five thousand.
Okay, not to exceed, do you know that's who? She's focused.
She's got it, she's on it.
All right, discussion? Same basic discussion, Steve?
Yes.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, no? 40. M2-11, agreement ratification with Stockdale Inspection Services for DSA Project, Inspection Services at the Petaluma High School Bleacher and Gym Floor Replacement Project, Phase Two, in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred dollars via secondary bond funds.
Second.
Steve?
So the board has previously approved the perks and installation of the bleachers. It's a Department of State Architect project. And so we're required to have a Department of State Architect Inspector. John Stockdale is a certified inspector who's done a lot of work for the district. And we're recommending the use of his services for this project.
Now, how do we negotiate with those state inspectors? They just have a set fee schedule to relieve it?
They have a fee schedule.
That was nice to have a monopoly because of the forces to use it?
We have, yeah, we have three or four different inspectors that we give proposals from.
Now, it's just him. Pretty close.
And so that's a price in some that, you know...
That's on an hourly basis. He'll provide a number of hours of service as required by the Department of State Architect to make sure that they're installed per the State Department of Architects approved plans.
Should that say not to exceed two or in case it works best?
In reality, that will probably, yeah, he will bill it on hourly and that's the maximum he will bill. So it's really not to exceed as well. Can you amend that? They'll probably be pretty close to that.
Let's put not to exceed, I always like not to exceed.
I move to change that to a not to exceed that amount.
So the advice, okay.
Sure, the other way.
Which one? No, you move it. All in favor?
Aye.
So we go from the little to the big. M2-12, agreement authorization with Advanced Micronet Solutions, AMS, a Delaware corp. Find in the best interest of the district to piggyback on the county emergency contract number 2009-121 for network development services for the wireless network in Petaluma City Schools. Three million four hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents via bond funds. So Lori?
Second.
All right. So I'm going to have Lori present a quick slideshow of it. Just as she's getting set up today, let me share with you that within the bond program, we had bringing our sites up to provide technology across the schools. We also have a representative from AMS with us this evening. But the plan is that every student will have a one-to-one device. They'll be able to log on, replace on the campus and do their work on their device. And so we've been working with AMS to make sure that we have a system that provides that. And Lori's been working with some independent people to review AMS's proposal to make sure that it's going to provide what we need. This is an area that if we made a mistake and we didn't have sufficient Wi-Fi, everything else that we're trying to do would be for hot or be hampered by us not having sufficient capacity, but bandwidth and capacity on campuses. So, yes?
Clarifil type question in regards to the agenda of items like this. So it's submitted by you as the CBO. So I'm, I don't know why I'm picking that phone. But in truth, if I had a question after reading my agenda about this item, poor grade is not off my phone, Paul. Right, like, should it be submitted by Ray and Lori?
Well, the issue is that it's an agreement. And so agreements are reviewed through the CBO's office.
Right.
Lori's reviewed the agreement as well.
Wait, then it's been reviewed by her first? I mean, she's basically reviewing to make sure contracts intact and money's, she occupies the money. But, I mean, this person right here is responsible for this, right? Because I know that, because I know. But what if I didn't know that and I went to go chase someone down to ask about this?
Ray would probably not probably...
Ray would get Lori involved.
Call Lori.
All right.
I thought you'd call Lori.
So somebody please step...
Okay, so it's funny, just to you, our AMS, Dave Zecker, he's a senior account manager. We've been working closely, fit together to create this for us. We're super excited that we're able to go in this direction. Like Steve said, the PCS network upgrade is integral to everything that we're planning on doing with our bond funds from this point forward. So our goal is to increase access to learning opportunities. And the way that we're going to do that is through consistent reliable internet access for all students. This is going to be the backbone and the infrastructure to support our one-to-one device initiative that will be launched in the fifteen, sixteen school year. We are going to provide every student K-12 that twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five day access from home to school to this internet through a device that we're going to provide for them. This is going to support college career readiness. It's going to help our implementation of Common Core State Standards. It's going to support our active learning environments and ultimately increase student achievement. As we move forward with this project, one of my flag will move forward. This is what we've done so far through this process. So we reviewed the problems and issues with our current network. We worked with AMS to make the network right now as reliable and stable as it can be. We have not had any problems since the beginning of the school year. We did have some issues. There was a couple weeks with connectivity, the internet, and students getting on. But since AMS has come and we've talked to them about our current problems and issues, they were able to come in and make our current environment as stable as possible. However, it's not stable enough to be able to support the initiative that we're proposing, which is our one-to-one devices. We discussed immediate, future needs and beyond. So we're looking at this project to be able to support the eight thousand devices, but also to be able to support a ten-year outlook. So we're looking to go ten years out. We had multiple meetings to tailor our contract needs. And then through my professional learning network of people, I put the contract out and I had it vetted through outside experts. And that's when we tailored the contract. So we've been able to have outside people come in, look at our network, say, yes, we agree with what is being proposed. Maybe not this, but this, maybe not this, but this. And that's what got us to our three-point-four million dollar contract. Our upgrade plan is scalable and aggressive plan. Right now, we're offering a hundred megabits per second for our backbone and we're going to one gig for our one-to-one. We will be having full wireless access at every campus, which includes at least two outdoor wireless access points and wireless access in every classroom. We will be upgrading our wireless to one gig as well with the equipment that's going in. We'll have the scalability and the future grouping of up to ten gigs, which is where we need to be going. That's where we need to be looking. This project is not looking about tomorrow. It's looking towards the future, what we need to be doing ten years from now. So that we do it once, we do it right, and we do it correct the first time. We also are integrating a managed network to better support the teaching and learning. Right now, our network is not, it's managed by us. Don't get me wrong, we have it managed, we have it filtered, we have all those things. But we don't necessarily have the support of the managed systems in place. We're a little bit blind right now with what we have. So when schools call us with issues, we do a lot of guess and check. Integrated into this plan is the support and the software needed to be able to say, for us to look at Casa Grande's bandwidth, for instance, and say, oh, okay, they're going to be doing smarter balance testing over here tomorrow. Petaluma High's not, so let's pull some bandwidth from Petaluma High and push it over to Casa Grande so that we know we can support that environment better. We also will have AMS supporting us in that plan. We also have integrated, which I don't have on the slide, we have a support professional development plan in place for our current staff to be able to manage this network as well. well. Our timeline is this, so we're right now in the discovery preparation phase. We're also looking for in February for about four to eight weeks, Dave and I disagree on four to eight weeks, I'm looking at four weeks, Steve may be looking at eight weeks, but we're gonna push. For the design and planning phase, the implementation phase will be through March, and it'll go about four months, and then in July, we'll be up and running, we'll be doing some training, we'll, and then in August, we'll have that, that managed support and the network up and running for a one-to-one deployment. Questions?
I'd just like to share with you on the sixth, when we had teachers with their new backbooks in classrooms, doing everything from YouTube to others with trainers showing them how to use the devices, even we have now held up fabulously. It was fast, it was good.
We learned a lot.
That was the last phase of work by AMS.
So I was just gonna say, we've worked a lot with AMS, we've learned a lot, so we were able to be able to push our resources to that one school site, so we knew we were gonna be at that one school site. We've been learning in our department how to manage and support these devices better than before. We have worked with AMS before, they have already, we've contacted with them twice with phase A, remember phase A, place B equals phase C, and all that business? So the phase A was the initial wireless, they came in and put APs in every other rooms, they upgraded some of our switches. Phase B was kind of bolstering the middle schools because we decided that we needed to move forward with an eighth grade one-to-one deployment there and have a pilot, and so they came in and helped us with that, had a contract bolstered it, and now we're to the point where we need to move forward with this contract in order to, to, to support the teaching and learning of this district the way that we want to.
Anybody have any questions? Can I, Dave, you start?
So are phase A and phase B complete now?
Yes, ma'am.
And so those contracts have expired?
That's the previous work.
Yeah, they were, they were done on purchase order, and they were, they leveraged the County Merced Focus contract.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they were, they were done in, I believe, phase B was done late, it was done in the spring of, of twenty thirteen, before the last year was finished.
In the spring of fourteen.
Yeah, three fourteen.
Last year I probably lived proof of like one point seven five.
Yes, in the spring of fourteen, that was that contract.
And those, that was funded out of the common corridor, from the state that was helping with infrastructure, I mean, the smarter balance.
So with all of that work, this just builds on top of what was already planned?
Correct, it's, it's been, the reason we had phase A and phase B was we knew ultimately you guys were gonna have to get here, and what we did was we went after the initiatives that were very hot and present at that particular time. Phase A was to get an access point into every other classroom, phase B was to prepare for the eighth grade one-to-one, and then when your bond passed, we began to work on phase C.
Yeah, when, with the one-to-one becoming a reality with the passage of the bonds, we had to beef up the capacity on the campuses. And again, this is, you know, this is a place where if you fail, you really fail, because we're, we're talking about textbooks, students' access to instruction through with devices.
Couple questions. Lori, so we talk about training, you're talking about your staff?
Yes.
Because this is simply wireless access, this is, hey, I turn my iPad on and I got Google, whatever it is called, that's all I know works, right? So the training is?
So we, we provide training, we have been providing professional development along for teachers as well.
Sure.
We need to embed that for students as well, but yes, the training that I'm speaking of is this is a system that is state-of-the-art, that meeting, that is going to be looking ten years out, that the, you know, when President Obama says, this is, you know, you need to have internet in all of your, your classrooms, this is what you need, this is what we're going after, his, the recommendations of ten gigs down the road, that that's what we're going to need with all these devices. Well, that needs to be managed, and so ours, my staff needs to be trained on how to manage that. We've also put a support system in place where we are buying into AMS's managed services for a year, so they too will be supporting us along the way, so we won't have to be learning and doing at the same time. We will be able to have the support of AMS's managed services, where they'll be like telling us, hey, you should be looking this way, oh, did you, you know, see this, and they can help us by making those adjustments while we're learning along the way. And so there's embedded professional development plan for the tech department in this, in this pro, in this contract, to be able to support this for future years.
All right, so the way that this contract works, though, we're all in, we're all done, it's, it's August fifteenth, and now we're in the support section, and F-Wing, F-Pole High School goes dark.
Yes.
What's AMS's role, and what's our role, and how does that play? I mean, I, I work in an environment where we have a hosted system, and so I get on the phone, and I enter, and say, I'm dark, let's go.
So we will not start the managed services until the actual implementation is complete?
Okay.
Which is August.
It's gonna be August, essentially. So from August to August twenty sixteen is when your, your first year led. AMS has a policy when it comes to workmanship, that we, we back our, our workmanship for the life of the, of the product. So from that perspective, if it was workmanship related, I actually had an instance here where that was, we kind of thought it was that, and so for good faith, we came up and we addressed some major issues that you guys were having. But we have built this for a support piece, training Lori's team, and then also having manufacturer support, all of that is encompassed and being built in for a five-year period of time, is the maximum period that I can offer you. So all the manufacturers, all the warranties, all that stuff is built into the, into the contract. So you will be fully supported from that, once Lori's team gets all spun up. This whole thing is for us to be able to turn the keys over to you. We'll be there to support you in that first year.
So F-Wing's gonna call us, and then we can monitor that from our, from the district office?
Okay.
And then we were gonna call them, and they're gonna turn it on, or they're gonna walk us through turning it on, and it'll be instantaneous support. I can, here's a good example. So we are used to doing things in the tech department right now manually, we do a lot of things manually. Manually takes a lot of time, takes a lot of energy, and we're trying to automate our systems as, as quickly as we can. So in the past, when we have done large deployments of like computer rollouts, for instance, we just deployed three hundred and fifty MacBooks for teachers, the tech side of it took four days, because we went to automation. We created an image, we used the tools and the resources in the twenty-first century to be able to say, we don't have to touch every single one of these devices like we're used to, we can touch one device and push that up to everyone. So we were able to deploy three hundred and fifty MacBooks from the minute the quote was in my hand, to the minute a MacBook was in the hand of a teacher in twenty working days. The same thing is happening here. We're looking to automate our systems to be able to say, oh, we don't have to have someone get in their car, drive over to F-Wing, look at what's happening, we're looking to say, we know exactly, in fact, I'm hoping that we know before F-Wing knows, that they're gonna have a problem.
So this is hubbed here in the DO?
Yes.
And somebody's pretty much monitoring it?
Yes, we have a network engineer, and he's on the training path. We also will be having two other team members, probably one of them will be myself included, who will be able to be trained as well, so that we have some, for lack of a better word, redundancy in the department.
And AMS doesn't have any piece of the actual delivery of the data when the bandwidth, you simply, in the sense of it coming here, I'm assuming it comes here and then goes out to everywhere, is that basically like a vacuum or state secrets, that's, everything, the pipeline comes in here, you don't deliver the data?
No.
You simply, your life is structured?
We are an infrastructure company, that's special.
All right, and who do we use or who will we use for that, is that still going through?
It's still going through scope on AT&amp;T lines under the current room. We, we actually built in the capability of not going through scope as part of the system. I mean, Lori's taken a lot of steps to provide as much flexibility within the system. Lori has spent hours in my office assuring me of all the steps that she has taken on, on this plan. I mean, you're talking about our first really large investment bond.
So having a hosted system in my other line, it's rarely your piece that fits, your piece usually works, because it's mechanical, the stuff comes through, gets broadcast out, there you go. I mean, every one, well, a fuse or something, or something funky happens, a burn, or something. What's the interaction, or what's your interaction with our provider? And you, because it all, in, in recent experience, I'm, I'm having a whole lot heart-earned with.
So I, so I agree with you, so I thought everyone together, so we had AT&amp;T with AMS, we invited to go to a meeting, we all sat down, we said, okay, this is what we're providing, this is what you're providing, we're all in the room together, that's how we're moving forward.
So there's relationships.
Yes, absolutely.
We have what you call?
We actually engineered our solution to, to complement what AT&amp;T's doing with your wide area network, so that we don't have duplicate efforts, so we did not have any kind of duplication and money spent.
Absolutely, no, it's super important, and we, we're open transparency now, we're in the room, we, you know, as far as, like I said, we are piggybacking on Merced Unified Contract, I went straight to Merced Unified School District, I talked to their IS manager who's in charge of their technology department, and I said, okay, tell me what you're doing, what does that look like? Here's our contract. I went out to, you know, Roseville City, went to their network analysis, and said, okay, here's, here's AMS's contract, what should we get rid of, what should we keep, what does it look like here? The same thing, we have an outside network engineer consultant, we use many consultants in the tech department, and I had a recommendation from one of the consultants that we use, he actually has used AMS, Chad, and so he's owns his private, his private business, he has vetted this entire contract, he's walked me through it step by step, he has not charged me a single penny, he is also interested in coming every time that we need to go through like a big sign-off, he's going to come, he's going to walk through the sites with me, he's going to say, nope, this still needs to get done, nope, yep, and he's gonna guide me as we, we move forward with AMS, and at no cost to us at this point in time. Will we probably use him as an outside consultant in the future? Yes.
Only question, where are we in regards to what we have in the bond for this and what we're spending?
We're, we're spending more than we had in the bond initially. When we built the bonds, it was based on our original assumption that, that was pre-approval of the one-to-one, and so when we took a look at that, it was too iffy and not, well, less enough to provide the services, and that, that we're looking at. When you're talking about Chromebooks, we know Chromebooks is, is basically a Wi-Fi hog, and, you know, has many advantages, cost of the devices itself being one, but to have a, have a program that's strong for ten years and will meet our needs, we're now talking about, about two-point-four million dollars about that. I will be bringing back revised bond program in the spring to show where we're at at this time. One of the things in the bond program, as you recall, is, are the performing arts centers. The performing arts center is really is gonna be a combination of bond funds and proceeds from the sale of property. And we'll be shifting more of that to the proceeds of the sale of property and less of the bond funds to probably help us with our infrastructure needs at this time. But we'll still have everything that was promised to the voters planned and in, in the works.
I have a couple questions. First off, or Steve, maybe you can go through it, how did we come up with AMS? I mean, I know they did this before, was the, what was the bidding process on this?
Well, it was going out and hearing about who's providing the services and who's really good, and then when you're a district of our size, who's got the bid out there that's more scalable than we're able, better economies than we're gonna get on our own. And so the County Merced has a bid, we've incorporated components of that in the board agenda item, but it was going out and finding, you know, who's providing the services statewide, who's really good at those services.
And you satisfied yourself with County Merced?
Yeah, so I wasn't satisfied at that point in time, no. So I read every contract, I've read everything multiple times, and then that's when I can have vetted AMS as well through at least twelve different districts statewide, and yes, I am.
How many, um, school districts are you guys currently serving?
Hundreds. AMS is, yeah, AMS is a twenty-five-year-old company, do over fifty million a year, and we specialize in K-12 in NorCal. We're just venerating into Southern California right now, so I've done literally hundreds. If you talk to anyone that's moved from district to district, there's a very good chance that we've touched their district in some way, shape, or form over the twenty-five years we've been doing this.
Are you, you guys a National Joint Power Association member?
No, uh, no, we are a corporate, a Delaware corporation, located in Northern California, so we are a NorCal company with about a hundred and twenty-five employees.
Okay, and a couple things, you, you mentioned that the workmanship, you said was basically lifetime.
Yep.
Guarantee to get the contract, forgive me if I'm a little legal on you, but, says it's a thirty-day warranty period on the equipment, but it also says free from defects and workmanship for a warranty period of thirty days. So what you were talking about, would that be the service agreement?
The, yeah.
Or is that embedded in this agreement, I missed?
The, the service agreement. AMS has always stood by its workmanship, so from that perspective, I don't know what you're looking at there, so.
Sale order.
System order agreement, yeah, that, that is, yeah, that's a, that's, no, no, but that is an agreement that we use to encapsulate a large project like this. But, yeah, my, my, AMS's commitment as far as workmanship is concerned is something that we really strongly believe in, it's tied a lot to our referenceability in K-12, and we really believe strongly that we have to take care of all the districts we work with. It's not that we're out there giving away free services and taking care of people that are issues that weren't related to our project, but it really is about referenceability in K-12. As far as the, the system order agreement is concerned there, if there's language there that we need to talk about after this meeting, I'd be more than happy to, to, to address that with you. But as far as the agreement is concerned, it's really just encapsulate all of the quotes that we use to build this.
Focus area.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I would like that about workmanship, I think that's a big selling point, it's one thing I get that you can't stand, your company can't stand behind, you know, the, we'll call it the, the equipment, because you're not manufacturing equipment, right?
Correct.
So I kinda get that, and just so you can, UCC protections, we have manufacturing warranties, et cetera.
Yes.
But I would like that in there if, in fact, you will, you know, you lifetime guarantee your workmanship, because I think that's, that's a strong statement, plus, you know, the day you get bought out by the hunk of sorceress hewn, all the handshakes go away, so this is what we're left with.
Not gonna happen.
So, no, I know, I know a lot of guys, rich say it wasn't gonna happen, but it happens, and I, I, I don't think it will, but I would prefer that in there, just because if it's, if it's part of the bargain, let's put it in there.
Sure.
And hopefully we never have to look at it, but it just would be, I think, a comfort to the district.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to get that done for you.
Okay, and then the only other real question I had, I mean, you're talking about all that equipment, we're talking about purchasing, correct? There's not, this isn't a lease component?
No.
Okay, because, I mean, for the uninitiated, as you probably know, I mean, purchase, we love more protection, we love more, you know, benefits built into a purchase with those manufacturers as opposed to leasing.
Yeah.
But you pass it through, so you buy the equipment, pass that through to us?
I buy it, I deliver it, I invoice.
Okay.
And then all my professional services, we do a, we do it on a scale level, where we do progress payments, where we get, you know, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and then we allow you to hold ten percent for retention, until everything is done, documented, signed off, walked, highly documented. The documentation's huge for Lori's team, because that's the tools that they use after we're all done to manage everything going forward.
And through this process of getting to the three-point-four million, is it, we, you know, started higher, and we've gotten to three-point-four million, I've made them walk more than, like, they said they were done, and I said, no, you're not, and they said, okay, what do you need? And, I mean, we were able to work together in a way that is, is a good relationship, a good partnership, and, and I believe that moving forward, that, that will continue.
Okay. So how do you wanna proceed, Steve?
Well, you have a motion and a second for considering that in regards to the lifetime workmanship we have, we will note that in the minutes as, as far as.
As a condition?
As a condition to the contract.
And on the workmanship, not on the equipment, because I, again.
Lifetime on the workmanship.
Yeah, I don't expect that out of any company.
It will be tied to, yeah, it will be tied to AMS, not that.
So, I mean, we, we have that stated here this evening, it'll be denoted in. It'll be denoted in a bit of minutes.
Anything else of concern, maybe you share? Lori, you did.
I absolutely did, I was so excited, this is going to be amazing, it really is. We're gonna be able to provide a reliable, consistent internet that is gonna last for at least 10 years or more.
The people that were working with Lori, we're looking at, we're providing here, and we're wishing they had.
Yes, I can share the feedback with you if you'd like from most of it's internet, you know, email conversations that I had with my different network analysis throughout the state, and they all were like, wow, do you call me? I wanna talk more about this because this is, this is wonderful.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Thank you for putting this together, because I did have questions, but they were all answered.
Yeah, it's a nice presentation.
Yeah.
A big chunk of money.
Yeah, it was magnitude, we shared your thoughts.
Providing free Wi-Fi for all our kids?
No.
No, we're hoping that, we're hoping that we're not. The other thing is, is that we will have access for our students and it will be password protected for our neighbors. So we will be providing a secure environment as secure as we can make it.
Yeah, that reminds me, I mean, Clovis Unified at one time, when they did Wi-Fi in their campuses, they put it in, and then they scaled it back to really only be their campuses and not the neighbors, and the neighbors started calling, complaining that they turned off their Wi-Fi.
Yeah. I used to have a lot of trouble with that, but we've got enough when it came to. So the security aspects, take care of the security?
Yes.
The only one, I guess, like final question and maybe just a neophyte talking. Data stored in the cloud, is that something you would manage under your service agreement?
We are, what AMS builds, and we offer services like Amazon Storage and those types of things. But in this particular project, we are building what they call a private cloud here at the district office, where we will have servers and central storage, SANS as we call it, where we will store all of the data that is currently being run on some physical machines that we've had here for a long, long time. So we'll be building you a state-of-the-art private cloud here at the district office that you'll be able to house all of your services, email, student information, accounting, all of that. And that's gonna be a revelation in your, in your data center.
And it will also alleviate some other costs that we will be able to let go of because we are having some help with that right now in other ways, so we'll be able to let go of that for this.
And as you go through your progressions, you'll begin to build what we call hybrid cloud, which is, you think of Google, Google is documents in the cloud, right?
Right.
So that hybrid cloud, private cloud here at the district office, that becomes the hybrid and that allows you the flexibility to be able to morph it as the, you know, years go on and your business services requirements and classroom requirements become more and more.
Well, one of the things we have to guard against is data mining. And, you know, I know your company wouldn't do that because you're a contractor, but, you know, people don't, I think a lot of people don't appreciate that when the kids put any apps on any of these devices and it's free, the cost is data mining.
Yeah.
So those things are programmed, that's why, and Steve, every time you hit, there's a little golf advertisement.
Yep.
You know, so it knows what you do this time. And the idea is that, yeah, we just have to be concerned with that in the next phase, Lori. That's something just, we gotta be careful with.
Yeah, we've incorporated all the security measures, we've incorporated all of the filtering and everything else into this project also, so we're gonna be able to work with Lori's team to really, to guard against all that.
And actually, we're gonna be more secure than this, than we have been. I mean, we're, because we will actually have more monitoring tools than we do now.
Yeah. And can we make sure that we look at the physical security piece of the drives and that world and the servers? Because all that's.
Yeah, that'll all be, that'll all be designed and done best practice, industry best practice. And then all of that architecture and all of that information will be handed over to the district just out of our, our final documents and everything else.
And the only thing I, I'll just say with one set of keys.
Yes.
And the only thing I would ask would be, be as honest and forthright as possible if it means we gotta reexamine something because it's best, it's like building a building.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes you run across something that it makes more sense if we just do it now. So we have to add on later, and if you know a trend that's coming, say, look, you guys might wanna step up to this point because it is coming. So those kind of suggestions are invaluable.
I was doing that earlier today on your behalf. So manufacturers are coming out with new equipment, we're like, hey, we have that model spec, and we caught wind of it early enough that we were able to actually get it into this project. But as that target begins to move and stuff like that, yeah, you have my word that I would always bring anything to you that we could do to embellish this project and make it even stronger.
I won't set me into like equipment, we need those.
No, no, I'm not doing anything.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
You ready? Okay, so no further discussion amongst ourselves either?
Okay.
So, call of favor?
Aye.
Okay, M21324. I report.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
I told you we started tomorrow. Trust me.
My calendar is thinking, we'll be back.
Do I have a motion on the other report?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you move on.
Second fee, you can vote. Try, be your tip of the pot.
Sorry.
Okay, discussion?
Well, as you look at the audit, it's actually improved from what you've seen in the last couple of years. Part of it's the change to escape and not having our standalone system that you're trying to balance with the counties, but also having improved practices in the business services throughout the district.
Okay. Was that your first audit?
Actually, this is still here.
Prior to? So you still are inaugurated on the audit?
No, she actually worked with the auditor in regards to the finalization of the audit, but the, the data that was being audited is from last year when it was still secret.
You know the work, but you're not yet responsible.
I like how you balance it out with that floating petty cash fund, Ray, that's a good trick.
No, no, okay, so any, any discussion? Any questions, Ray or Steve? Home favorite?
Aye.
Or zip? Moving right along. 7.3 Educational Service, this is an action item, 7.31, Mary Collins Charter School at Cherry Valley Charter Renewal. Salmo?
Second.
Steve?
Jane and Fran are here to answer questions that you have relative to the charter. This is the third renewal of this charter from the initial adoption and now the third renewal. So, you know, this is requesting a renewal for additional five years on the charter.
The biggest change from the state is to ensure that educational outcomes, student outcomes, are the focus of the charter and included very strongly within the charter. And we would, you would not be able to approve the charter if they did not meet one of five criteria. Cherry Valley did meet one of five criteria, which means that they were, you have to meet educational outcomes now in order to go forward with the charter, and the educational outcome that they've met is that they are over 800 in the API, the Academic Performance Index.
You know, Jane, one of the things that always occurred to me whenever we're, especially with charter schools, but we've talked about a lot, Steve, and certainly at the junior high school level, we have our companion districts who feed in, okay, Adobe, Law, that feed in the tracking of those kids, which should be a little bit easier electronically to see if they're integrating, are they coming in ahead, coming in behind? And has anything ever been done like that with Cherry Valley, with those eighth graders coming in?
We actually have.
We did, okay?
Yeah, last year I did a study of kids in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade who had been, who were at Cherry Valley, and looked at their GPAs, just because our testing, you know, our star testing and stuff, it kind of dried up at that point in time. So we looked at their GPAs, the ninth graders coming from Cherry Valley, overall, just overall, wherever they went, had a GPA of 2.5. The 10th graders had a GPA of 3.0, and the 11th graders had a GPA of 3.2, just an average.
Okay, no, I mean, my own anecdotal was my son's graduation year, 2012, I believe. The co-valedictorians were both Cherry Valley kids. So I thought that was interesting.
Cherry Valley points to that, that as a pretty frequent occurrence at other high schools.
Yeah, well, I mean, it bodes well for them that they're getting children prepared to come on to, you know, the secondary campuses. Any other questions? Jane?
I just have a sort of tangential on a friend. After our last charter approval, what's the feel at Cherry Valley? How are the parents, everybody okay?
I'm sorry.
In regards to McKinley Charter Approval?
Oh.
How did that play in your, in your community?
I think it's actually helping people understand what our intent is, or what we want, and what we just offer, and what potentially this offers at McKinley is different. So I think it's a good thing to be skilled because it's more short, so it's, you know, different options.
And the reaction from your parents, somewhat?
Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't, I haven't heard of too many of ours that are potentially opting for that. They know that we've got some things that we're looking to ramp up a bit and change, and I think we're going to stick with it.
Thank you. That was all there.
So Jane, you said the law had changed a bit in your government, so no big substantive changes?
We, if you, as you read through the charter, you'll notice that there are very clear student outcomes tied into the LCAP. Cherry Valley's LCAP is different than the district's LCAP, it's built on the district LCAP. So that was the most important change in the rewriting of this charter is that we really had to address student outcomes.
Okay.
And Fran did a great job of doing that.
Any other questions? Few? See one on the tip of your tongue, I can see it.
Just the enrollment, I know, is always strong, Cherry Valley continues to be, and you have wait lists.
Yes, and we have, I think, our tours, that we've got coming out, I heard that we've got two P3 tours, both of which right currently are at 53 parents. So that's a lot of people to tour around on the campus. So yeah, it's exciting with that other end, McKinley, I'm learning where you're beginning to build again. There's a lot out there. We even have parents calling, that our three-year-old children, and we say, you know, you have to call back next year.
You wanna do Cherry Valley pre preschool?
Pre pre?
Double pre, pre two. Sharon?
Yep.
Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So what's the process, Jane, this gets sent off?
This goes to, it does not go to the State Board of Education, it just goes to CDE. They look at that, you approved it, and then they re-up it in the database. There's actually a database that's kept for charter schools.
Steve, on these, on the N section information only, I don't have to line out on that, do I?
No, just on N1, just like to share that Williams Settlement Court of Uniform Complaint Reports, there's no complaints when the period of service refers to December 31st. And the rest of them, if the board has any questions relative to the board policies or ARs that are in the board discussion, we'd be happy to discuss those with the board.
Everybody read those?
I have no questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, then that'll take us all the way to the entire N section. So that takes us to future business, correct?
Yes.
So future business procedural item, so.
So I'm looking at, in January, we're hoping to come back with a report to the board. It'll be where we are with the one-to-one deployment for next year. So Lori will be making a presentation on that. It's really the beginning, and there's lots of work between now and next year, but I shall share with you where we are in our thinking at this time. And Jane, any other reports?
I think that one's gonna be pretty big, so we're trying to put off everything else.
The second report will be, Ray will be making a report to the board on the governor's budget and the impact on the district.
Yeah.
Okay. On that note though, just so you know, I'm just gonna say it, Steve, let's balance our agendas. I'm not bigger than like cram full agendas.
Well, as you know, today we had no reports, we had no reports on tonight's agenda because we had, we had plenty of other items to discuss.
Yeah, this is a lot of waiting.
So signing the papers, I take it Sue, you have stuff for us to sign?
I do have lots of pages to sign.
And Steve, one do you want me to read out on our closed session?
We're going back into closed session, so I'll come back and read out on that after reconvening around closed session.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
I get to call back to close, but do you want me to sign before I do that?
Please, yes, I need a lot of signatures that we need.
So you guys just, we're gonna go to closed session, and I don't know when we'll be coming back out, you're welcome to stay.